The Board of Supervisors, I need approval of the tentative agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Amanda, would you read the minutes of the previous meeting, please?
November third, twenty twenty five, Chairman Raffelson called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors to order at nine a.m. First president for Cluse, Bosch, Raffelson, Luke from Ellis. Motion by Ellis, second by Cluse, to approve the tentative agenda of removing item seven, Adam Cleveland, recommend engineers to give an update on secondary roads. Or to give secondary roads updates, sorry. Motion carries. Approve claims for payment. An open forum, Bob Ritter asked the board to consider financial support for the amicus brief and also thank the board for all that they have done regarding the pipeline and eminent domain. Julie Glade also spoke in open forum thanking the board for all of the work they have done regarding the pipeline and eminent domain and would also like to think like the board to consider financial support for the amicus brief. Marjorie Swan asked the board in open forum to consider financially supporting the initiative ISAC is making to protect the counties and the future local control nationwide. Bob Waltz, thank the board in open forum for all they have done regarding the pipeline and eminent domain. Chris Oliver, recommend veterans affair presented the proclamation for Operation Greenlight. This proclamation shows support for the veterans. Motion by Bosch, second by Ellis to proclaim November fourth to November eleventh, twenty twenty five as Operation Greenlight, motion carries. Oliver gave legislative updates for Veterans Affairs in twenty two thousand two. There were thirteen hundred veterans living in Wright County with eight hundred being brought in. In twenty twenty five, there are around seven hundred and eighty-nine veterans living in Wright County with eight million being brought in. Oliver attends trainings nationally to obtain her required CEUs. There are many changes to chapter thirty-five B as I have a code being proposed as well as administrative rules. Motion by Cluse, second by Ellis to contribute five hundred dollars from the LATCF funds to ISAC for contribution towards the amicus brief. Motion carries. Motion by Cluse, second by Luke to adjourn the meeting, motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? If not, they send approved as read.
The only one is a secondary roads update, you have up late is capitalized. I don't know if you wanna change that, I mean, it's not, it's not a huge. It's just a place type of graphical.
Okay, claims have been around. Open forum for the supervisors, for the public. And see, let's go down to receive the monthly revenue report for Wright County Sheriff. County car service fees and mileage. Two thousand three hundred seventy-seven dollars and eighty-three cents. County new and renew weapon permit, two hundred and forty dollars. Copy fees, a hundred and two dollars, a total of two thousand seven hundred nineteen dollars and eighty-three cents.
Motion carries.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Uh, appoint Greg Shapool to the Wright County Conservation Board.
We had a board member resign unexpectedly. Uh, we tried to split up the board members around the county. Mr. Shapool's name came up. And another name came up. And that other person said if he wanted it, give it to him, so that's why we're recommending, obviously, for the farmer.
More, more slight area?
No, over at Goldfield.
Goldfield.
So that'll give us one from Goldfield, two from Clarion, and two from Belmont.
Uh, what's, when's his term up?
I would have to look that up.
You'll, you'll assume the remainder of the person's.
You'll have, you'll assume the remainder of her.
For me.
I would make a motion to appoint Greg Shapool to the Wright County Conservation.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Tony Nichols, Wright County Assessor. Receive and take action on allow or disallow family farm applications.
Your name? Um, family farm applications were due November first every year, so these are kind of late compared to all the other forms. Um, so this is actually for the twenty twenty-five assessment year. Um, this year we sent out some new ones, like if there was a, a name change or something we were unsure of. Um, so we have a few more than usual, we have fifty-one that we're recommending to allow. And then we have seventeen that we're recommending disallow. Um, so it mainly depends on what type of ownership it's in and who the designated person actively engaged in farming is. Um, so it's gotta be a relative within so many lines. And depending on if it's a corporation or an LLC or what type of ownership it's in, um, has different rules and requirements as well. So, um, other than that, we were able to call some people and if we were unsure, we asked questions. Um, the ones that we are recommending disallow, we do send out a form to, a letter saying, hey, we're disallowing this because of this. If something is wrong or if you feel this is an error, give us a call, so.
If, but it's, it requires signing up for annually?
No, not family farm.
Once you're in, you're in.
Unless something changes, person farming changes or the ownership changes.
Thank you.
So. Any other questions?
I would make a motion that the chairman, uh, be allowed to sign, uh, intercourse with your recommendation of allow or disallow.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all ayes.
Yeah, let me when you're done, then I can come grab them unless you wanna drop them off, thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth.
So. Laura Thomas.
She's at six thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Adam.
Quick update, uh, motor graders, I, I don't know if you guys have been seeing, but our guys have been out ditch cleaning, uh, they've done uh, a lot up on one hundred and twentieth and Lee, so if you have a chance to go take a look at that, uh, they've done quite a bit. Uh, they're, they were working on two sixtieth off sixty-nine, two ninetieth off of highway seventeen. They've done, uh, next to Ashley's place. Um, and then some on Keyakuck and Jackson, so they've got quite a bit done. Um, I think up on Lee, it's almost about two miles of ditch coming, so they've done pretty good with them, um, that's where their training's coming in handy, uh, and they're liking it, so. Um, trucks, uh, we had to go out this weekend, obviously for some white stuff that was falling from the ground. They went out, uh, did a couple of rounds on Saturday, uh, skipping off, uh, slush and whatnot. Uh, twenty-three work orders completed, mowing, uh, we're still going at that zone three. Um, is zone two is completely done, zone three is about a fourth done. You could say that, and then on the Taylor Avenue Bridge, they poured the north up pile of them, so that's where we're at with that one, so.
I had a question or a phone call concerning, uh, if we continue to mow ditches and I said I assume we will if we get the weather that.
Okay, yeah, well, I mean, it's supposed to be sixties this week, so I'll just keep going, so we're running a skeleton crew today, so. Probably about ten to fifteen guys going.
Um, will you be doing any, like, weed whacking around the bridges, um, that inside where the road is, it's good, but on the other side, it's like super tall.
Yeah, I know that's on our list too.
Okay. It just, it's like a snow fence around the bridges then, so.
Anything else for Adam? Thank you, Adam.
Thanks. That closed session is still waiting on the county attorney, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, we'll go down to, uh, old business, we're still waiting for nine thirty-one to come in. Any old business?
On, on Friday, I went down to, uh, Des Moines, the state, um, ECI, Early Childhood Iowa Board was meeting, uh, and on their agenda was consideration of assuming the same, uh, districts as our mental health has gone to, so I think that's divided into six or seven districts. And, uh, I went down and spoke at that, Mark Thompson spoke, uh, one of the senators, I can't remember what her name is, but she's a member of the board. Uh, spoke and that got turned off, so that's good news. Uh, we should be keeping that, uh, for local control.
Have you heard, um, did they give any updates, uh, to you on the amicus brief, how many counties signed up?
Uh, they did not, but, uh, you all should have. Well, maybe not, I didn't even look to see, I received an email from, uh, Steve Kinkle with the, uh, amicus brief. Let me, let me just take a look here and see what I can see. This was a forward from Steve Kinkle. Uh, and I will forward it to you three, it is the brief for amicus, right, uh, Iowa State Association of Counties, uh, so it was filed, but, uh, there was no information in there about how many counties had, uh, joined.
Looks like twenty-two?
Excellent.
That was, that's five days ago, so.
Excellent.
Yeah. So hopefully, you know, this week more supervisors will have it on their agendas. And join in.
Then they sent us the email that they were sending out. Um, the stuff in the mail, too. Did we get anything in the mail? I thought that they said that they were gonna, they sent out.
They're not yet.
Okay, they sent out an email saying it would be, yeah.
Any new business? Updated meetings?
We have, uh, this week on, uh, Thursday, the three to four o'clock is the House of Just Minigation Planning Teams Meeting.
Yes.
I think you all should have been invited to that.
Yes, and I will be out of town, so.
And then of course, Canvas votes on Wednesday at nine o'clock.
You're put.
That was all I have.
And I changed it out.
I'm going to.
Thursday. So their vacation, if they're all.
Oh, I don't know. You'd need, where are you guys doing it at? It's just a webinar, isn't it?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's a team.
Oh, okay.
It's a meeting, it's not just a webinar, so I didn't know if they need to put out an agenda that you're all gonna be present.
I would imagine, yeah.
If, if you're gonna have Coram, now, only two of you are gonna be there.
Who's opening up, knowing?
Time is at Thursday.
Three to four.
We're, uh, it's on the computer, it's Teams, yeah, I won't be there.
I am not, and, and I will say.
There's one, two, Lynn, are you gonna do it?
I won't, so we don't have to have a board.
But you. You could do it, I don't have to.
That's fine.
Got it. I guess I'll be on there with you.
I can do it from home, we don't have to come in here, yeah.
Daily.
It looks a little harder on an old Apple computer like mine because it doesn't support Teams, but Andy found a way.
We will be in recess until nine thirty. And at that time, Sandra Jackson with Elder Bridge should give an annual update.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, we'll convene as the, uh, drainage personnel, uh, Courtney. We need approval of the agenda.
So I'll, I'll second.
Uh, would you read the minutes of the last meeting, please?
Yep. Last meeting was November third, twenty twenty-five, Wright County Board of Supervisors met in regular session as trustees of the drainage districts with the following members present. Raffelson, Cluse, Luke, Bosch, and Ellis. Also present were Amanda Meyer, Auditor, and Courtney Moore, Fringe Administrator. Other interested parties via Zoom were Robert Ritter and Shannon. Chairman Raffelson called the meetings to order at nine thirty-nine a.m. Motion by Luke, since seconded by Ellis, to approve the tentative agenda, motion carried. Minutes of the previous meetings on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, and October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five were read and approved. Motion by Cluse, since seconded by Bosch, to approve drainage plans for payment. There were five work orders that were reviewed and approved. Uh, got DD thirty-six, section twenty-nine of Lake for a washout where the intake is located on the west side of the open ditch. DD fourteen and section five of Lincoln, there's the Beaver Dam. DD forty-one and section thirty-six of Wall Lake was a blowout on an eighteen-inch tile. DD one oh five lateral B and section thirteen of Lake was multiple blowouts along a fourteen-inch tile in the northwest-southeast of section thirteen. And DD ninety-seven and section three of Vernon was two blowouts on a twenty-four-inch tile. There were no drainage invoices needing approval, Moore showed that we were currently assigned to Brandon Meyer will be getting reassigned due to the contractor being injured and unable to complete work at this time. She also informed the trustees the twenty twenty-five Annual IDDA Conference in Fort Dodge, Iowa on December five, twenty twenty-five, and to register if they plan to attend. Free registration cost this year is eighty dollars for IDDA members. Motion by Bosch, since seconded by Cluse, to adjourn the meeting, motion carried.
Any additions or corrections?
I wonder if, uh, with, with, uh, the contractor reassigning those, if it should just be as he has requested, that he will not be able to get to it instead of being. I just didn't know if that would be in minutes, it's up to you guys.
Can you say what now?
And, and just saying, um, that the Brandon Meyer has requested to reassign, uh, due to not being able to get to those work orders at this time. Rather than that he was injured.
No, it's still in here, he's unable to complete work orders at this time. I could find the way it is. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Claims.
We have no claims for today.
Open forum for the public regarding drainage districts. Work orders.
We have five work orders. First one is for Dean and DD one sixty on, it's either the man or the lateral one, they're.
Lateral.
Okay, they're parallel tiles. Um, this is in section twenty-three of Lake Township, reported by Tom Gangston. Uh, this is reported as a, as multiple blowouts on lateral one. And they requested Mozdam on that one. Next one is for Lynn for DD one forty-one dash six and lateral three in section thirty-four of Iowa, reported by Kelly Lees. As a blowout on a sixteen-inch tile. I believe Lynn did go out and take a look at this one and provided pictures. Um, the next one is for Lynn as well, and DD, uh, two-two-eight dash eight-five on the relief. And this was reported by Kelly Lees as a plugged twenty-inch tile with water actively coming to the surface, outlet damaged and ditch, blowout above tile outlet.
That's strong with Franklin.
Yes. Uh, the next one is Betty's and DD forty-one, section thirty-six of Wall Lake. Uh, reported by Neil Thomas as a broken tile that is taking dirt in, and he has requested vinegar. And then the next one, um, is for Lynn and DD, uh, two-two-eight dash eight-five. Uh, Lynn, when he went out and checked the other two sites, he actually came across this site. This one's kind of a little bit of a tricky one, and we're gonna leave it at your guys' discretion here. There's a blowout on the top edge of the ditch bank that's causing the bank to slip in. Um, the, Lynn did not see any tile that was going into the ditch to drain. So it is private tile that is up there, but it's right at the top of the ditch bank and it's causing.
The tile is actually at the bottom of the ditch and the others, um, tile running north and south there, so I'm assuming that's one of those tile that's blown out.
The north and south, that's the ditch.
Right.
And then there's a tile on the other side, and then your hole is on the east side of the ditch.
Right.
So it's, the hole is causing the ditch bank to slump down in. So typically, if there's an inlet that goes into the ditch, we'll take care of it and fix it, even if it's private, because that affects the integrity of the ditch bank. This is essentially doing the same thing, affecting the.
Agreed, but there was, uh, according to Beacon, there was tiles that ran parallel to the ditch, correct?
Correct.
On the west side.
It could actually be a blowout in one of those, this, that's, is the sloughing on the west side or?
It looks like it's on the east side.
On the east side.
Sloughing's on the east, tile on the west.
Got you, okay.
Here's the when the two tiles are.
Yeah, we're still responsible for maintaining the integrity of the ditch, yeah.
And that was the last.
It would be nice to know why, if it's a private tile that's that someone has outletted into that, um. But it, it didn't look like a suckhole, it looked like it was just caught in the, the bank was just.
Still have your work order?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn's got the pictures that he sent to that location and his packet there.
Okay.
So you can take a look at those if you'd like, but those are the work orders.
Okay. Review and sign any open drainage invoices.
Uh, we have seven invoices. The first one is from Nightmaster, this is our drainage attorney, for seven hundred, or four hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, this is for his work, um, preparing a memo and that for DD one ninety-four laterals and reviewing documents. The next one is for Johara for DD forty-six dash ninety-two on lateral one for brush and weed control. And the amount of one thousand two hundred dollars, and that was his estimate. This is a joint with Webster, but Wright County is the control. And the next one is for Johara again, for DD four, brush and weed control, the amount was two thousand eight hundred fifty dollars, which was his estimate. Uh, then we got an invoice from Mozdam Construction for work done for Ryan Anderson and DD thirty-six. And this is where the combine fell in, and this was eleven thousand five hundred and one dollars and eighty cents. Uh, the next one was from Mozdam Construction, this was for Austin Keller. Um, he had reported a broken tile and a culvert that had collapsed, and the amount of that is five thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents. The next one is from Black Dirt Drainage, this is for DD seven, so we recorded by, um, DD trustee on the Wright Brothers property as a washout and big cave, um, that was in the ditch bank, and this came to twelve thousand eight hundred eighty-three dollars. And the last invoice from Black Dirt Drainage is for DD twenty-nine, reported by Andrew Denio. Uh, this was for three blowouts, um, Betty had gone out and looked at this location and put a note to replace the tile from the north fence line, south into contractor. Uh, finds a solid tile approximately twelve hundred feet. This invoice came to forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-six cents.
This is Black Dirt, Andrew Denio?
Yes, and Lee Gallantine and I, uh, met, we went after that one meeting, he was here. And we went out and looked at it, and Andrew thought that the, you know, uh, the tile would be about, and replacing that would be about thirty-five thousand. And, um, and so that's when Lee and I said, talked about it and said that, go ahead, so I need to contact him, I see that the tile itself is forty thousand plus the sixteen-inch, so. Um, so I need to figure out why and what happened there.
What's still under our threshold?
It is.
No, the the thing that someone may question, or another landowner may question, is you have the contractor doing the work on.
Mm-hmm. His prop, well, and it's not really his property they find.
No, but.
And typically, we like the contractors to let us know if they're gonna be over twenty thousand, so that we can just send notice to the landowners.
Mm-hmm.
And they're not.
And I feel good about you guys having gone out there and.
Yeah, we.
I got no, I mean, he knows how to fix tile.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've got no problem with that at all.
So, but I do need to talk to him, cause it is, you know, what he, what he and I and Lee talked about in the field is not the same as this, so. I plan on having a conversation and asking some questions.
Okay, appoint engineer to drainage district thirty-six, sub one lateral, a petition for repair involving railroad property at the direction of the drainage attorney.
That is correct, uh, I have been speaking with our drainage attorney, Eric Edie, about our work order um, from a couple of years ago that we had started with the railroad, um, filing the petition, and that was when Dave Johnson was still our drainage attorney, and it just kinda dropped from there. Uh, I shared all the communication with Eric, so he's now up to speed on everything that has happened since the work order came in. Um, I did inform him that I did send the last engineer report that we have on file with the application to the railroad. Um, he feels that because this is such a hot topic right now, that this could become um, a bit of an issue, because it is with the railroad, and he feels that having an engineer on this and possibly doing it engineers. Um, just a simple report or having them proceed through the process, uh, will be beneficial. He did share that he has done work on another county, and they appointed Lee Gallantine, um, with CGA as the engineer, worked out wonderfully. Um, so much so that when he had some other projects in some other counties, they actually called him in to be an expert witness. So, uh, Eric's recommendation is to appoint Lee Gallantine with CGA on this as the engineer, and he'll work with Eric and um, proceed through and see what we can get done, so that we can get this work order taken care of, and then move on to our others that we have as well. Um, there is a memo that is coming by snail mail from Eric. Uh, I have not received that yet, hopefully it'll come in this week, and then I can share more information. Other than that, I've shared everything that we have at this point.
And Lee was available.
Lee is available and willing to work on this.
I would make a motion to appoint Lee Gallantine as the engineer on the DD, DD thirty-six, sub number one lateral, a, uh, petition for repair on the railroad, concerning the railroad property.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion to adjourn as drainage trust.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes. Okay, we're back in session as Board of Supervisors. And we'll have a, we're having a report from Sandra Jackson with Elder Bridge, she gave annual update. Good morning.
Morning.
Well, thank you. I'm gonna make some phone calls on this one, Greg, do you want to keep your folder or no? Let me see, I can make sure I got it. Yeah, thank you.
Watch your keys, you slide in.
Will do, thank you.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Um, I did attach, um, some town-specific data for you guys, but anyway, my name is Sandra Jackson, Chief Operating Officer with Elder Bridge. And, um, I just wanted to tell you guys an annual update for the year. The demand for service continues to remain high, but the funding, um, continues to lessen. And so what we specifically experienced here in this county is actually a decrease in total people served because of that lack of funding. And we've been directed by the State Aging Unit, Aging and Disability Services to implement waitlist to prioritize those people that are most in need uh, as far as congregate or home-delivered meals, which you know, in terms of serving everybody, we like to do that, but we've just been directed to prioritize those with the greatest need, and so we are starting to see waiting lists that are popping up throughout our service area. Uh, which is twenty-nine counties, and, um, obviously this is one of those twenty-nine counties spanning sixteen thousand miles is our coverage area, and so we feel like we've been very good stewards of the county funds, and are so appreciative of that. Um, just wanted to reflect that. The return on service, we feel is pretty significant, we provided seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents of services to seniors for Wright County for every one dollar of county funds. And the total of service dollars provided in this county in the last fiscal year was two hundred and twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. So in terms of that, you know, we're not asking for a significant increase, uh, we're looking for three dollars and thirty cents per senior, uh, for increase, um, to help our match. And we figure that by, based off of census and number of people over the age of sixty in this community. But overall, um, congregate and home-delivered meals continue to be the largest program of service. We also provide other services in the community that are based on our mission, which is really to keep people within their homes, help them age in places, and honestly are able to do that. So caregiver programming, you know, those are services that we provide staff to go in the homes and evaluate what the needs are and help connect them to services, whether it be emergency response, home-delivered meals, um, chore, you know, snow removal, those kinds of things. So overall, um, we're continuing to be, we're continuing to be committed to services in the community and want to continue to be good stewards of your funds, so I'm open to questions, uh, from anyone if you have those.
Would, when you said, uh, in your early presentation, you talked about, uh, I think the state is asking you to prioritize services, so how does that work with, uh, like congregant meals, how do you prioritize?
Yeah, so because it is a registered service, we, um, we provide, and, well, we completed intake on every individual that gets a service. And based on those answers that they self-report, uh, results in a scoring uh, mechanism, so to speak, and those with higher scores get served first. And it's not that, um, someone going to the meal site couldn't be served if they don't rate higher on the list. They can, you know, have payments for, I mean, they can be private paid. Um, there are some sites that have funds from other places that can support that, like, just simple well, what we do as well for like grant funding. We try to be very, you know, open to giving grants, and we do fundraisers, and so many of the sites, we've encouraged to do the same, and that's how they're still serving people, we have some sites that are pretty much unaffected by that, because they're, they're saying, hey, we, we've got grant funding, or we have money from these sources, but essentially what it amounts to is that we, based on the self-report, we provide a priority list to each of our sites of those that need to be served first, and of course, there's movement, people can come off and on the list. Um, but overall, that's how that works, is this boring mechanism.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
You had said something about decreasing people served, does that mean there's a decrease in people that are eligible for this, or because of funding issues, you are not able to
Yes.
serve more people?
Yeah, the demand is still there, I mean, we still have lots of people frequenting meal sites, but, um,
Mm-hmm.
that right now is the only service programs that we're doing waiting lists, and we hope, you know, not to have to do them in other programs, but the female program i- is essentially the largest served program throughout all the twenty-nine counties.
Cause I'm seeing, okay, so on the, the, this side of the paper, from last year to this year, does that mean that there's like been eight thousand less congregant meals provided?
That is correct.
From last year to this year?
Yeah, yeah, and the part of it is like the carryover from the COVID, I mean, we, we were operating with like overall eight point some million dollars less, and then last year it's six million less, and and so it's just the COVID funds depleted and have created a trigger effect.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, those funds were wonderful, and we served a lot of people, but not sustainable, obviously, because the funding went down.
Right, right. Wow. So this next year, you're asking for twelve thousand and a hundred dollars?
That's correct.
For returning.
Oh, exactly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Very much. Take care.
You as well.
Okay. Safety Committee, consider going into a closed session pursuant Iowa Code, Iowa Code, chapter twenty-one point five to discuss information entailing records in the custody of a government body that are confidential records pursuant to section twenty-two point seven, subsection fifty.
I'll make a motion to, uh, go into closed session. I'll second.
In accordance with.
In accordance with, uh, Iowa Code, chapter twenty-one point five.
Tila.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll start.
All in favor?
Aye.
All ayes?
Bye.
Bye.